Welcome to the Town of Long Beach Building, uh, building, Town Council Meeting, November 11th. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my mother, and individual with liberty and justice for all. Do I hear a motion to approve the Town Council Meeting minutes of October 14?
So moved.
Go ahead. End discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opening remarks. I'd like to thank any veterans who are here. Also, going forward, at least while I'm present, where we're going to run this meeting to try and be more efficient and get everybody home for Monday Night Football is during the public comments section, we're going to limit either anybody to three minutes. We'll set a timer. And that's three minutes for people who like us and people who don't like us. As far as back and forth between the Town Council and public comments, we're going to have none of that unless somebody on the council wants to do that. If somebody wants to have a back and forth, they will say, "I'd like to have a back and forth." We'll vote it up and down, up or down. If it gets voted down, then they'll have to wait for their comments until after public comments are over. If it gets voted up, then there can be a back and forth between those two people. Or anybody else who wants to, but the same person in the audience.
And that's for me.
That's for what?
That's for me.
That's for you, yeah. That's the, that's the feet by foot amendment. Okay, so that's it for opening remarks. So starting off, Police Department report. While I'm thinking of a chief, there's a black Volkswagen parked in the community center lot and the car won't start. If you could not tell them until tomorrow, that would be great.
About a couple of hours, 146 dispatch calls, 27 walk-ins, 4,000 phone calls. Traffic stopped, there were 34 on the bike citations, 100 on the road, 21 road warrants, street parking citation. 15 suspicious subjects checked, some suspicious vehicles, 15 courtesy services, six ordinance violations, and one more than citation, 16 water complaints. The reports of two theft on vehicle reports, one fraud investigation, which was turned over to prosecutors about this warrant issue, which has been investigated, an overdose investigation, an attempted suicide investigation, no type of license plate, one information report for pursuit and arrest for theft from vehicle possession of narcotics and marijuana.
Edit. Okay, Police Commission report.
Meeting was canceled for an unknown reason. It was canceled.
Okay. Volunteer Fire Department report. Guess we aren't going to do that.
I'll just say that there's an emergency going on right now at the, on Oriole Trail. There are three, the Port County ambulance and three volunteers from the fire department that are attending my house. So anybody who thinks that they don't get good service from the fire department, go over there.
Fire Commission, I guess we don't have either then?
There was no meeting.
Okay. Street Department, Tom?
For the past month, we've been going over our tire trucks, putting some repairs and set those all up, so those are all obviously looking better. We're also working on our shop lights inside the maintenance facility because probably two-thirds of them are out and they needed repair and everything else, so we're doing it at the house. And we started to clean up some of the town parks for leaves, but kind of.
Mother Nature.
Appreciate you guys being out there catching those snowflakes before they hit the ground this morning. That was impressive. Street Commission, Jane?
Yes, well, Mother Nature called them all out and doing an excellent job keeping our streets clean, and I want to thank them for that. What Tom's been working on is the Community Crossing Grant for 2020. The call for projects begins Monday, January 6th and closes at January, on January 31st, 2020. So he's getting it all prepared for that. He's working with Hassan Associates, Matt Minial, and they are getting the payment asset management plan to line up with what they want to be done in 2020. And they're hoping that they can get all the drainage problems worked on before that they pay that next year. So that's been most of what the work has been done as far as the commission. And we just want to remind everybody that as soon as we can to start raking those leaves to the street because we, you know, we'll probably run a little late because of the snowfall, but hopefully we'll have a better weather and we'll be able to do that. So that's the end of my report.
Park Board, Joy?
The Park Board does not meet until 11:26 at 6:00 PM right here, but I do have an update on Stop 18. A huge thank you to the more than a dozen volunteers who showed up Saturday morning to help us plant 450 dune grass plugs, including the two young men from Marquette who put in a little community service. The benches, the bike rack, the toter enclosure, and the walkway have been installed. We got the 450 dune grass plugs in in the nick of time, and all that's left is some split rail fencing. And there would be no December meeting because their December meeting falls on Christmas Eve.
Oh.
It didn't want to show up. That's it.
All right, Community Center?
The Community Center met on November 4th. The committee is reviewing the leases and will have a recommendation at the December council meeting. And one issue we had for, I think, the third time, there was an incident where the Y needed police, and they called twice and the police never showed up.
Yeah, that actually, yeah, that was resolved this month, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
But the police did meet the two perps.
Oh, okay.
And so they didn't stop at the Community Center, but they did, they did actually respond, but the people who called them didn't.
Correct.
Yep.
That's it.
Okay. Water Board, Nick?
Water Board met October 28th. Really, primary item of note is discussion regarding moving all of the paper tickets to electronic tickets and orders for the work that the folks do. So discussion on purchasing a couple of iPads as they digitize those. So really nothing else to report for the group. Next meeting, November 25th. Please my report.
Budget Finance?
Budget Finance will not meet till Wednesday, but I do want to make some comments. There was some controversy in the prior election indicating that people felt the town and the council were somehow remiss or unethical or incompetent in the management of the town's funds. I want to address those situations right now. First of all, the town has never been in a healthier financial position from a cash perspective. As of 31st, there's a million 958,000 dollars in the town's bank account. Just like to go through a couple of the funds. If you don't know right now, the way the monies are handled in the town is there are various buckets that are called funds. There's a general fund, there's an MVH motor vehicle fund, there's a local road and street fund, there's a park fund, there's a fund fund, there's every kind of fund you want to manage. And taxes and other tax, real estate taxes and other taxes from cigarettes, motor vehicle, gas taxes, gallonage taxes are contributed to these individual funds, and it's out of those funds that budgets are prepared. Let me just give you an idea of what we're talking about here. In the general fund, right now, we're in the 10th, we've completed the 10th month, that's approximately 83, 85% of the total fund, a total year. There can be some issues with what I'm saying, minor issues, because we may spend more for leaves than we anticipated in the last month. But here's the status as of right now. The town's general fund, in the general fund, we are, let me go through this, we are at 72% of budget, which is less than 83% of budget. And I don't see anything that we're going to have a problem with. And the motor vehicle fund, we are 75, I got it right here, let me just check it. In the motor vehicle fund, we are at 73% of budget. That includes the paving, the community monies we spent for Community Crossing Grant. In the park fund, we're 63% of budget, and it's doubtful that we'll be spending much more because of the weather here. The Community Center, I'll make some special comments about the Community Center, there's a fund developed for that, really part of the general fund. When I was first elected, the General, the Community Center was losing either by cash or failure to collect rents or charging low rents, I'll say it again, I've said it time again. When I was first elected, the rooms over at the Community Center, 900 square foot rooms, were renting for 150 dollars a month with heat, light, security, everything you can imagine. 150, you couldn't buy a garage, you couldn't buy cold storage across the street for 150. Those rents have been increased. We were spending a lot of money, people like Tom and the Water Department people over there fooling around with stuff that had been maintained poorly, and they were called in to correct these things. Right now, we are basically revenue neutral with that fund. In other words, the funds that are coming in are paying for that Community Center, and there can be more. The Riverboat Fund is basically part, is a fund that you get from Riverboat, it comes in at, from the number of visits that people make to the Riverboat. Every time you go, click that turnstile, keep going folks, every time you click that turnstile, the ticker goes up. We're at 74% of budget. These budgets, by the way, are all approved by the Department of Local Government Finance. They're typically run through with somebody like, such as Carl Center, to approve them. The SETIT Fund, which is another fund, we're at 58% of budget. The CCD Fund, CCD Fund was the target from a lot of, I'll call them haters, people who did not want to spend anything or were willing to somehow embarrass the council as to how to attract or how to generate funds to promote the development of certain things in the town, such as the Community Crossing Grant. Could not have been done without an increase in the fund. The Community Crossing Grant says for every dollar we put up, the state will put up $3. We now have, we're, we have about, I don't know what the number is here, but we're substantially below the requirement there. Anybody who thinks that we have not managed this fund is not telling you the truth. The CCD Fund, when it was initiated about three, four years ago, the first tranche of that, I will call, we went from almost less than a fifth of a penny for 100 dollars of valuation to approximately 2 cents. We've since raised it to 5 cents. The total there has raised the total taxes in the town, and it has raised taxes in the vicinity of about 3%. 3% of the total taxes have gone to this. But that has allowed the town to not only fund the Community Crossing Grant, it will continue with the Stop 24 project, it will fund Fire Department and Fire Department equipment. It went from basically zero return to the town to probably 250,000 dollars a year, something like that, that comes into the town. And if that doesn't sit well with you, the issue becomes one, the way that the funding occurs is that if the town did not get that money, I should say it this way, you've probably heard of the thing called circuit breaker. Circuit breaker says that if we don't have a sufficient amount of tax base, or our tax base is too much, we then contribute money to the county, and we don't get it back. And it's distributed to other taxing entities in the county, other receiving entities. This is one way of making sure that the monies that people pay in taxes at least come back to the town in part. I'm not going to say it's a complete wash, but it's a substantial way for us to recover through an alternate means, some of the money that is distributed through the thing called circuit breakers. If anybody wants to talk about circuit breakers, give me a call, I'll be glad to talk to you about it. It's complicated, I'll have to brush up again in a long period of time. Some of the things that we found when we talked about, other than managing to budget and identifying projects and developing a budget, some of the things that we found when, when I was first elected, let me just go through them here. These are the kinds of things that were not being done. There was, the town's insurance policies had never been reviewed for as far back as I could find, 10 years. When these were redone, and most of this stuff was done through the Budget and Finance Committee, we saved 28,000 dollars per annum. And we got better service, and we got better people who answered the bell when it was time, time to answer the bell and serve us. The Community Center, as I said before, we're losing 50,000 at lease. There was a lane on the table when walked in the door, a 65,000 dollar lease, what would you call it, payment that the town, this place was all budgeted when it was repaired 15 years ago. And we had to float a bond, we paid it off, I think, I think our last payment on that was maybe three years ago. But when, when I walked in, there was 65,000 dollars that had not been claimed from the town, just laying there, and it took us two years to recover that 65,000. We had a police contract with Dunland Beach and Sheridan Beach, not Sheridan Beach, Michigan Shores. We were paying way, way, way below market price for that. Since we've raised that, we save about 40,000 dollars per year on that. In other words, they're paying more, and there's more to come. Something so simple as handling vacation sick time generated us about 5000, 5100 dollars a year. Those are some of the top, the things that we went after. The police dispatcher situation. It used to be a 24 by 7 operation. That has been cut back and charged costing us about 100,000 dollars a year. We've saved about 70,000 dollars a year on that. Those are the kinds of things that we have done in the Budget and Finance Committee to help build this town up. And what is probably the least attended committee meeting that exists, the Budget and Finance Committee. I have not seen over the past year, perhaps more than one or two citizens come in and try to find out what's going on, which leads me to another point. I, what frustrated me most was I saw a couple of comments, and I don't do social media, I saw a couple of comments come through, somebody said that we don't, people don't know what's going on. I can tell you that when I started here eight years ago, the budget, the website had not been updated for four months. It had almost nothing on it, zero, and was not about to be updated. With the help of Kathleen Garrity, who donated some money, we built the website and populated it with all the data that's out there right now. And I guarantee you, I have looked, compared it to almost anything except perhaps the Port County. It has more information in it, more current information than any other community that I've seen. You can find reports out there for every committee, this council, everything, all the ordinances, the ordinances that are being proposed, the ordinances that are being developed. So anybody who thinks they don't have enough information, perhaps we can do better, maybe, you know, that'll be up to Nick and Bob as they go forward here. Perhaps they want to do more. But Nick now puts out a email to anybody who wants to participate. In the eight years that I have been on the council, I have received a total of two calls, two calls from somebody who wants to talk about something that's up for grabs that we're talking about. Two calls. I wrote two letters during the campaign, which I felt were appropriate and needed, and on each of those letters that I wrote, I received about 10 calls because I included my phone number and I included my name, which others refused to do. So I'm, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to put it, I won't be here when the next, when the New Year rolls around. But these guys are open to any positive suggestion for any committee at any point in time. But people who sit in the back row and titter and carry on and talk about undoing everything that the council has done over the last four, five, six, seven years are to be ashamed. Talk about sore losers, I'm a sore winner. And I'm, I wish, I hope that everybody will grow up and stay off social media, come to the meetings, talk about what's going on. If you have an objection, raise it. If you can participate, fine. Don't, don't start throwing bombs. I can tell you that doesn't help anybody's case. I got that off my chest, maybe I got more later, I don't know. But that's it. Thanks.
Could I ask a question? Is he, is he taking questions, Mr. President?
Yeah, he can, this is a public comment, go ahead.
Oh, good. Could you explain what I don't understand is the, how, how we saved money on employee vacations?
Sick time and, and vacations. It used to be that, don't even know about this, that, and this is something we ought to send to the CDC because it had a remarkable effect on the number of sick claims that were made. We changed the policy from having open X number of free days per year when somebody calls them sick, to limiting it and saying, these are the number of days that you will be paid for. And lo and behold, what happened?
Yeah, we, we were buying back sick time.
When were you buying back sick time?
Yeah, yeah.
When, what years?
12 and maybe 16.
12 and 13, so you mean nobody called them sick?
Well.
No, no, please, I don't understand this about, it's always thrown out there and it, it reeks of that there's some unethical things being done, and I would just like it. You brought it up, and I need you to please be more detail oriented when you talk about this. So please be very detailed when you explain this to me, okay?
I'm done.
Okay. Bill, could you explain it to us?
We had, we were, we were repaying people for sick time that they hadn't used.
Okay.
And we were paying people for vacation events.
Okay, and was this one department more than the other?
What's that?
What department was, had this problem?
Everybody, all departments.
Front office, police, street, water?
Yeah, not, you know, not, not the clerical side, but you know, they all were, were doing that, and so we just changed that so that you can carry over a week's vacation, but you can't get paid for it. And so.
So you were, instead of them taking the time off, they were cashing them in?
Yes.
And what did you do to change that?
We just, we just said that you have to take your sick time during the year, and you can't be reimbursed.
So no longer, even if they didn't use it, they couldn't be reimbursed, is that true?
Yeah, and you know, so, and, and even though it might have benefited also, you know, when you talk to HR people, the idea of skipping vacation or skipping sick time is not really a healthy situation.
No, it isn't, it isn't.
You know, you're a nurse and.
Right, but I, right, there's side talk that they took the time off, but they just didn't, they, they didn't register it with.
No, no, nobody, I don't think.
So they were, they never had days off, they never took time off, or they were sick, okay, but the thing is, is Pete is taking credit for rectifying that, but still no one has told us what he actually rectified. And it reeks of that you don't want to tell us, okay?
It reeks.
Not you, Bill, I'm, I'm saying anybody who knows about this, if you just can't explain it, how can you say it? Then I'm not, I'm talking to Pete, I think it's unethical.
Okay, I'll be glad to answer it in detail at some point in time, anytime, not right now, and I have never taken.
Why not right now, Pete? You took a lot of time talking, but why can't you then explain?
I ju, he just did.
No?
He just did.
So were the people never sick before, did they never take time off?
I'll let Bill answer that, he's going to handle the timesheets. And for, and, and.
Did you ever ask the chief, did you ever ask the street department, the water department, supervisors?
And I will state that at the beginning of my comments, I said very clearly that these things were established, approved, run through, evaluated by the Budget and Finance Committee, of which I'm a member, Bill's a member, Bob Gallagher, Joe Jogman, at that time, I can't remember who else was a member at that time, who else? At that time, there were other people. So all of these changes, reviewed, everyone that I talked about there was not my credit, it was a credit of Budget Finance Committee, which you never attended.
Oh, I did too, but the thing is, is.
You were never there, I, you never.
Pete, I was, I was there a lot.
I never.
Now, the thing is, is you want to take credit.
I don't want to take.
You want us to suspend reality so that you can say that you did all this, you never mentioned anybody else, you said before I was elected.
Okay.
But you.
Before I was elected, those conditions occurred.
It reeks that you aren't telling us everything.
Before I was elected, those conditions occurred, when I was elected, the first thing we did was develop an active and effective Budget Finance Committee. And in that committee, there was never any issue discussed about politics, about anything. It was how could we better serve the town? Would you agree with that, Bill? Yes, same.
All right, but the thing is, is if you've taken the credit, but you have not taken the responsibility that you, why they always got reimbursed for their vacation and sick time in the past? You have full control over that police commission, you never looked into it, you never gave us information about what's going on, and, and it stinks and you don't have, if you can't explain to me why people would take time off, but they didn't have to register it with their sick time, then it's ridiculous.
Okay, Human Resources, Bill?
Yes, Human Resources, I want to talk about two things, health insurance and salaries, which we have kind of pushed down the road until December. But first of all, health insurance, we're currently using First Source as our broker and Blue Cross Blue Shield Anthem as our carrier. Our, we probably had, they were on it when I got here eight years ago, and so I'm guessing it's been at least 12 to 15 years that we've been with Anthem. And our employees are extremely happy with Anthem carrier. We had one employee who was very nervous about changing because he had a, an identity theft issue. But in any event, I was just contacted by our insurance broker that of, for 39 clients, only three, and Long Beach, we want them, had a 0% increase for 2020. So it's my recommendation that we continue with Anthem for 2020 for the employees, and I think, and we have talked about doing some other things. Problem that I have with the A Medical Trust is they refuse to come out and give a presentation. They just say, "We'll give you a price, but we won't give you a presentation." So I'm hoping that we can at least keep that. Maybe mid-year, if we get a breathing spell, we can talk about what we, you know, if we can get something else going. But for now, I would like the council to approve going forward with Anthem. Because one thing about health insurance is you can change in mid-year, whereas in property casualty insurance, you need to make a commitment for the whole year. So that's something that I want. Second thing is, we've been working very hard, Joy, and we've been on the committee, and we're trying to, on salaries, to do a, you know, to do salary surveys, and what we. we're trying to, on salaries, to do a, you know, to do salary surveys, and what we keep coming up with is no, I can't really find anybody that's comparable to this, the quality and the longevity of the staff that we have here. I mean, we look at Bob Zokowski and Tom and Greg Parrish in the water department, and, you know, they're, you know, they're where the rubber meets the road, and we don't have, so you call people superintendents, but they're out there doing the job of a laborer. And so I did the math, and a 1% increase for all employees, and I'm happy to be the one that does the accounting, because I don't need it like the others do, but 1% for all employees would be $6,100. 2% for all employees would be then 12, 2, and 3% would be 18,400, I guess you can do the math, 5% would be $30,000. And while that seems like a lot of money to some of us, when we spread it out over the course of 11 full-time employees, it's pretty trivial. But even the cost of the town is not very great. So I guess I, we don't have to make a decision on this tonight, but if anybody has any comments about it, for me, a 3% increase would be $18,000 more, and as Pete has indicated, we're certainly healthy enough, and we've got, and we've got employees that I want to see rewarded for what they've done. And Tom did not toot his horn, but some of the things that he does are, you know, he's, he and Brent work to, you know, I'm paying bills for parts, because they feel it's cheaper if they can fix the snowplows themselves instead of taking them out and paying the big bucks to get them to go to, you know, to go to a maintenance, to the truck maintenance place. So in any event, that's my, that's my shit.
So these decisions need to be made next month?
Well, we can, we'll put together a salary ordinance for next month, but I think that, you know, what we need to do is, I, you know, we don't have proper, you know, we talk about it, but we haven't done it, and we don't, we really haven't done employee reviews, and so it's unfair to say we're going to, we're going to be selectively benefiting one. I think we have, if we think that people are worth it, I think we want to, we need to give them all a raise, and of course, we're very, we're very healthy, I think, to me, a 3% rate would not be out of the question.
Do we have information on, like, median salaries from other...
We've got salary surveys that we do, but it's something like, for example, Burns Harbor pays a two-year police officer $52,000 to $54,000. And we, you know, we're in there about us, but they're just a little bigger than we are, but they're a town approximately our size, and so our salaries are definitely in line with that on the police side. It's really hard to compare two-man street department and two-man water department, because these guys do, you know, they're called superintendents, but they, they see them in holes all the time, so, you know, they're out there fixing things, and so...
And all the other people we tried to compare with, you know, they don't tell you, do they work part-time, they work, you know, one day a week, so it's really hard to compare property name information.
Yeah, to me, to me, it's almost, it's almost looking at the staff and saying, are there any people that we think we want to drop off the edge of the, you know, we've got Sergeant Schoolly, who finished first in his class at cop school, we've got Mitchell Sights, who was our newest employee, who's a college graduate with a degree in police science, and we've got Jason DeGalese, who's a star, and so we've got, we've got really good, we've got a really good staff of people, and same on the, you know, that's why I think trying to make comparisons is, I think, kind of fruitless, but we're not talking about a 30-man staff, a 50-man staff, but about 10 or 11 people.
Well, I think that since that is difficult in this area, I think that the people who work with them, the councilperson who works with that department, now, I can vouch for the street department is worth every penny and not more, and I would like to see there be a substantial raise for them. But I think it has to be done by someone who supervises them, and it just can't be, oh, I feel generous today, you know, I think for the, I would pay, Tom is worth every penny we pay him, and so is Brent, and so I can say that, you know? So I think that each department, the town council member who's been working with them should vouch for the progress they've made and all the different criteria for a raise.
Yeah, the problem, the problem that we have, though, is immeasurability, like any other business, you know, I have to, if somebody says, how much am I paying Joyce Schmidt, you know, for her services, you know, and I can't say, well, I can't tell you that, that's private information.
Sounds right.
You're all making a massive $2,400 a year, so, but that's, you know, but that's the, you know, so all of that information is public, so to try to, you know, try to selectively increase people, as it should be, what you're doing is you're putting a, in my mind, with a target, not the person who gets the increase and the, you know, the person who doesn't get it, because I had this, I know, it's admirable, but I don't think, I don't think you can do it properly.
The town has no procedure of evaluating employees, and therefore, without a procedure, you can't, you just can't do that.
Yeah, so I would like to suggest that we develop that procedure, and that there be an annual review process, and we're planning on discussing this at Wednesday's meeting, the Budget Finance. I'd like to see, if you can prepare the ranges for everybody, you know, all employees, and then we can begin with that process and identify what we, what we should be doing. And we can look at the survey that's been done. I don't agree that it's totally useless, but I do know that the resource report has been, is deficient in many ways, so, but I'd like to address that, and anybody's willing to attend, free to attend, Wednesday's Budget Finance Committee meeting. That's where we discuss issues like this and make a recommendation, that's the purpose of the Budget Finance Committee.
Okay, that's it.
Bill, just to clarify, you said that Blue Cross and Blue Shield said there was no increase for next year?
Do you want, you know, I think if you do nothing, the insurance is going to go forward, but if you want to make a formal...
But you said Blue Cross and Blue Shield, there was no increase for next year?
There's no increase, so there's no change, it makes it easy for the administration, and so...
Sounds good to me.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, Chris is suggesting that maybe it would be a motion on the health insurance to move that we continue with Blue Cross Blue Shield for 2020.
I'll make that motion to continue with Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Building Commission report, Pete?
Oh, I'm going to have a second. Let's see. Yeah, what did I do?
I've got the agenda, you want that?
I need some relative.
Yeah, I've got it here.
I've got it here. Here we go. Okay, in the Building Commission, we met last Friday, and we had also met the prior Monday in an emergency meeting to address issues of the failing seawalls and the compromised stuff. On Friday's meeting, and Friday basically resummarized what we did on Monday, so I'll repeat that at the end of this. We started with reviewing from old business 17 permits. We had one, one permit that was, we directed to have a variance, go in front of the BZA for a variance. We had one permit that had been cited, and they failed to pay the citation, we'll be following up with the attorney. We had a stop work order on one of these permits where they were not building to plan, in other words, they had submitted a plan, we approved the plan, and they were not building to the plan. We had one permit pending because of insufficient information on the plan, we have a list, and you can see it at the beginning, you can see it right outside here, when you apply for a permit, you've got to supply X number of documents. We had one sand plowing without a permit that was outstanding, that they had been cited, and we'll be following up on that. One other, there was one permit, we didn't get any additional information on, it's in an unknown state. Another permit where the individual had applied for a minimum amount on the permit, said that it was going to be somewhere in the vicinity of $500, turns out that they were gutting the entire house. If anybody wants to get the name of that contractor who do that for 500, let me know. We had a septic, a company that installed a septic with no permit from the town, of course, they have to get them from the, from the city, from the county, but they also need to get a permit from the town, that is a repeat violator, the contractor who's done that several times, and we're tracking that down, and we're going to take action. We had two permits that were requested, that existed for, that were being requested to put homes on a non-conforming lot, in other words, they wanted to do something in a lot that already had problems, it was either too small, encroaching on the town property or encroaching on a neighbor's property. We had two permits that were approved, these are all the old business permits, two that were approved, two more that were provided incomplete information, we asked them to go back, and we had one individual who asked for, wanted to move sand down on the beach, that was before the Halloween storm, that doesn't make any sense anymore. In new business, we had several permits, one variance granted, one came back to us, they had gone in front of the BZA, the variance was granted, and we approved their plans. We had six homes that have identified that they have seawall problems of various sorts. These are principally at stops 22, 23, and 24, although there is one at 21 itself. We've had, this was the topic of an emergency meeting that we had on Monday, prior Monday, and what we instructed, what they've been instructed to do is they're going to give them permission to do any kind of emergency repair requirements that they have, and you've probably seen some gigantic sandbags down at 22 and 23 that have been installed. We've told them that they can do whatever they need to protect the property on an emergency basis. Going forward, these properties were all subjects of being poorly located, poorly designed, and poor construction, insufficient construction, and you need only to go down to see the ones at stop 22, 23, to see what kind of stuff has been put in place, and we just decided we're not going to allow somebody to come in and hire their own contractor, hire their own thing, and redo the same errors that they had before. So we require, according to our coastal ordinance that we put in place about a year ago, that they engage a coastal, a certified coastal engineer, that means somebody who's had experience and is certified to do work on Lake Michigan, the Great Lakes. At least three of these places have contacted a company called Ed, what is that, what is it?
Edgewater.
Edgewater, a certified coastal engineer based out of St. Joe, Michigan, or in that vicinity. We've required a surety bond to protect any of the stops, because if some of these seawalls fail, they will, and they flop over onto the stops, then we're stuck with it. So they'll need to provide a surety bond that ensures that these things are cleaned up. They also must require, acquire permits from the DNR, Corps of Engineers, and FEMA, and do simple things, which a coastal engineer I'm sure will do, require core samples, in other words, determine what the footing is that they're going to put these seawalls back in place. The DNR has already stated that these seawalls must be repaired in place, they're not to be moved any further lakeward, so if they have a problem with a seawall, they replace the seawall right, right where it's at. What else is there? And they have to follow the individual town ordinances as far as site setbacks go. So I don't know, I didn't check my emails late this afternoon, but we have some, some people that are responding at this point in time. They are, have acquired, as I said before, they've made contact with Edgewater Resources, and there are two other coastal engineers that we identified in the ordinance that they... So it's up to the homeowners, who are greatly distressed, as you can imagine, and we will allow them to repair their seawalls in place, we have no problem with that. End of story.
Can I ask a question? When you said that the ones that did work without a permit, or were doing work outside of the permit's description, you said you cited them, can you tell us how you cited them?
We sent them a citation.
Okay, is there a copy of those citations that we can request to see as a, you know, information request?
Sure.
Which, you keep going like that to...
Well, you got to request it.
Well, we're on Thursday, so...
Are they?
I'm not sure about that.
See, I don't...
Yeah, because I, I know, well, it said there are five steer citations, and I only have two, so, yeah, so we...
So why is there only two in his office?
I can't, but, so we have, but, but in the main, but there's no reason that they're withheld, I guess, except that we have, in this...
You know who has them in their possession?
I don't, no, I don't...
No, I don't mean you, Bill, I mean the building...
I'm sure the building inspector, I think, has copies of those.
But why aren't they in with the records that we can request?
They would be in the records.
So they're in their files?
Joe Jogman could tell you exactly where they're at, but the building inspector, I'm sure, has them.
I see, so in that, what does it say to them? What does the citation say, generally?
It cites an ordinance that they are working on, working against, and that they have not either received a building permit, part of Chapter 150 and 151, I'm sorry, 150, yeah, 150 and 151, require that building permits be acquired, and there's an ordinance number associated with that. And when the citation goes out, the person who issues the citation says, you are being cited for ordinance number such and such.
And then what does it say?
Signed, sealed, and blue.
What are their responsibilities then?
Pardon? Their responsibility is either to come in and pay it, or after X number of days, which a procedure has been set up with the clerks, the puffus, after X number of days, it is turned over to the attorney, and the attorney will then take it to court.
I see, have you taken any to court?
We have, just, there is work, but there aren't many that are pending, other than, there are some that have been referred to take action. In those citations, there's also corrective actions that need to be taken, as I alluded to, we've already booked one contractor's permit or license, and there's a number of orders to do as well.
I see.
Or operate them, or outside the scope, or not containing the proper permits.
I see, have any of them received an increase in fines because of the time lapse?
They accumulate.
Yeah, but I mean, this is what people say they do with these citations, so I'm just wondering, is there teeth in it, so that it doesn't continue?
I don't know any specific ones that you're talking about, some of the older ones, and I think that's some of the work that the ABC and this council has done, is to change some of them.
Right, with fine structure and all that, but it's always the enforced...
Some of the older ones are not, as most are correct, some would rather just pay the fine and continue with it.
But they don't even pay the fine.
That's a, a town effort to decide, going forward, look through and go through the ordinances to see where you need more teeth. And I think the newer ones are probably much more aggressive and have provisions for some aggressive increases in fines that address that variation. The shoreline protection ordinance is the prime example.
BZA report, there was no BZA meeting since our last town council meeting. The next meeting for tomorrow is canceled, so the next Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will be the second Monday in December. Advisory Plan Commission, Nick?
Last meeting was October 21st. Main update, and actually, I'll save the stop 24 update until I believe it's under new business. So I'll save the reporter update for that, on that portion. But regarding the main topic at the APC meeting of discussion has been the amendments to the existing shoreline protection ordinance. And I think after at least two public hearings, a workshop, 40 to 50 comments that we received from, from the public, we did, the APC did take those, that feedback and incorporated it into the amended version that ultimately the APC decided to approve or recommend for approval to the council, which I believe is being considered tonight. But at a very high level, you know, some of the things regarding stairwells and existing stairwells, I believe the language that was changed in there provide, or allows for existing, existing stairs to remain in place and be repaired. So it was really affecting anything sort of, sort of new, or certainly wouldn't allow for, or provide, I guess, stronger language around nothing going into the public trust area. So just firming up that language. I think there was some language inserted in there with respect to pathways along Woodson Dunes. I don't know, Bob, at this point, if there's anything you want to summarize with some other changes? Or if you want to save those for when we get to the, to the ordinance itself in new business?
Yeah, well, we can talk about it now. Basically, nothing about pathways, but there is the, again, just what we were talking about with fines. And the fines for plowing down dunes will accumulate on a daily basis if someone's plowing down a dune without a permit from the DNR or the Army Corps or both. But that'll get discussed. Any questions? Okay, building permit revenue report?
Building permit revenue report. Twelve permits approved with fees of $4,334 on project costs of $402,840. We had three electrical permits issued in October with revenue of $4170, total fees of $417. Legal expenses paid in October were $10,707.50, $5707.50 to Braden Nelson and James, $5,000 to our alternate BZA attorney, Austin Kiper, to cite us.
I'm going to approve the reports.
Second. One discussion item, I think Chris had brought something up to the council's attention prior to this meeting. Has that been addressed in here or reflected in here?
Yeah, that, one of the things, Nick, that we talked about, there is, there is an invoice that was paid in November, which should be approved at this council meeting for the October work. But it's always confusing to everybody, but we don't report, we report the check that we got. And because we didn't get it approved at the last council meeting, Braden Nelson gets two checks if they're approved, you know, today. So that's a check.
So that'll be, that'll be in claims, that'll be in the claims approval later?
That'll be at the claims approval. Those, a big long list of claims that I, that I sent with, you know, with the two sets.
The check register?
Yeah, that's, there should be, if I am right, there should be two, two claims in that. The claim that I got, one that happened last time came after, after I had done the checks. And I don't know whether it was, I don't know why, he didn't do it, but anyway, he said, "Let's just pass on that one." And we won't do it until next time. So that's the reason.
Okay. Does that address your...
He didn't get paid.
Okay.
Yeah, it addresses mine. I just wanted to make sure. Technically, the way I look at it, if it's paid in November, that number is going to be...
That's right.
So I have two checks. So I just wanted to be clear that there are really two claims. My credit is all, so there is not an issue. And just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page, although, so if there are legal fees that are worth double, I have a lot of issues.
Yeah, no, there will be, there will be $4,000 for Braden Nelson and $40,200.
Okay.
Chris is on red and water until tomorrow.
So the check register is not being considered?
Yeah.
And not voting on that right now?
So, okay. So all in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
Unfinished business, sewer update?
Sewer update. The preliminary engineering report is complete, and Hoss will be presenting it to the Michigan City Sanitary District for their review. I think they're meeting this month. Carl Sander is revising the cost analysis, email provided, and gets that ready. And after acceptance by the Michigan City Sanitary District, they will schedule a public hearing for Long Beach. We saw some preliminary numbers. It doesn't look really that far off from the original numbers we were looking at. John, congratulations, coming in as a council member, and he has been involved in a sewer project from day one, so I think we'll skip the beat on that. That's it for the sewer update.
Do you think that open house or the public meeting, Long Beach, is that going to be this year, calendar this year, or do you think it's going to be calendar year next year?
I can't say for sure.
Okay, just a reason for my question. I know we've gotten a lot of feedback from residents just wanting ample notice, particularly, you know, folks that are here year-round. Just the more notice we can get, the better.
Yeah. I'm sure they'll be very accommodating, especially if you give them more time.
All right, so I think we have a presentation about Stockwell Woods and Moon Valley from Save the Dunes.
The presentation is really from our land conservation committee.
Okay.
From the land conservation committee convened four years ago. First question we asked was, "Can municipality protect public property in perpetuity?" And we asked several attorneys, the sure answer was no. Then we started looking at finding a local nonprofit that maybe we could partner with to somehow accomplish the same result. So as it turns out, Save the Dunes owns Stockwell Woods, which is 13.26 acres back in Moon Valley, behind Stop 16, runs down to about Stop 14. That's right in our backyard. So the committee members and others, I know Dr. Lemay came out a couple of times, we did our due diligence and volunteered in Stockwell Woods alongside Save the Dunes. We wanted to be convinced they'd make a good partner. And we did that. We've done a lot of work back there. We have not yet been able to have our control burn, but we're still working on that. We've got snow down here. We can do it next day or so. So the land conservation committee, and I know we have Dr. Uhas here, our chair, and Dave is on the committee, we would ask the town of Long Beach to consider the transfer of ownership of three parcels in Moon Valley to Save the Dunes, with the caveat that if anything ever happens to Save the Dunes, or they divest themselves for any reason of the property, ownership would revert back to Long Beach. I've given all of the council members a map up here, and I have extras up here. If you guys would like to grab a couple, send them up and lock them up. You can cast them out there. So if you get the map...
Map? I'm in.
We're looking at this little map off of, it's on P K. And you'll see some parcels, they're numbered one, two, and three. And there's a really odd-shaped parcel there that's Stockwell Woods. Long Beach owns these lots, one, two, and three. One and three are owned by Long Beach, but they lie in Michigan City. Number two is owned by Long Beach and lies in Long Beach. Stockwell Woods is currently 13.26 acres. Our total would be 24.61 acres. So we could make a total of, you know, like 38 acres of a really beautiful, pristine dune back there. I know this property bucks up against the Moon Valley Land Trust and Woodruff. And Chris, I don't know if you represent them, and so would Captain Ask, I think that you're accused of your side in this project, perhaps? I don't know if you're involved in SITAC, but I'll let somebody else figure, figure out that one. So I'm just here to give the actual facts and the details. So here's the property we're talking about. This map will show you, this is Carwick Road over here. This is our existing little trail. And the town maintenance building is also in there. This is about 25 acres. In between here, this is owned by the Moon Valley Land Trust. And you can see over at Stop 16, here we come up to Stockwell Woods. And then this shows the three pieces of property we're talking about. I don't think this property has ever even been sandmined. I think it's pristine dune. And I'm now going to turn it over to Dave Hoppy, who's on the committee, and he's going to carry on a presentation.
Hi, my name's David Hoppy, 16th Oklahoma Court, here in Long Beach. Seven years ago, when the town took its most recent strategic planning process, one thing that was striking to me and to a number of us, was that one of the, one area where there was almost great unanimity among people here in the town was a desire to quote-unquote "preserve Moon Valley." This was something that people, whether they were beachfront homeowners, or living inland, wherever they happened to be, this was something that caused great agreement and was listed, if not at the top, close to the top of the priorities for the town's strategic planning. In our last election, candidates representing all parties, as well as the town, expressed a great desire to preserve Moon Valley. Well, as you can see on this map, there are portions of Moon Valley, whether they're controlled by the Moon Valley Trust or SITAC, which are beyond our reach in terms of our control to preserve. But Parcels 1, 2, and 3 are within our control. And creating a contiguous forest preserve based on what really we learned are pristine greenland conditions, combining Stockwell Woods, three parcels, represent a tremendous opportunity for Long Beach to create and preserve green space, which we know adds to property values and significantly enhances the reputation of the town in a way that, with a trusted partner, can last, if not in perpetuity, then for all intents and purposes. I feel strongly about this project because my dad was involved in saving Stockwell in the first place, moving it into the nature conservancy. Since I've lived here in Long Beach the past six years, I've been involved with my wife, Nellie, in a number of efforts to work back in Stockwell. We've assembled groups of volunteers. We've created a kind of cadre that's capable and enthusiastic about going back there, taking care of trail maintenance and other deal, details of maintenance that are required back there, like any other basic species. And working with Save the Dunes in order to accomplish this. I think this is also a great opportunity for partnership. It's already been manifest between Save the Dunes and Long Beach and a number of different types of projects. And so I think this is a really great chance for Long Beach to add a significant piece of land to its portfolio, if you will. One that, in the course of our maintenance, you know, we've had opportunities to walk back there with people from the National Park. We've gone back there with professional botanists, who've told us that there are rare species of flora that are back there that are found in very few other places. This is Oaks of Van, which is one of the oldest and rarest forms of dune or landscape that you can find. And it's here in Long Beach, and we have the opportunity to preserve it. So I hope that the council will seriously consider this proposal and will approve it. And now I'd like to introduce Natalie Johnson, Detective Director of Save the Dunes.
Thank you. Well, it is truly an honor to be here. This is a very exciting evening. What an opportunity. We are deeply honored that you're even considering this. And just really, it's a privilege that you would think of saving trees in this partnership, that we can steward what would be still your woods. I want to emphasize that, that while we have that capability to preserve the land, we don't do it for ourselves, we do it for the people. And that's the way that we're approaching this project, we're approaching this partnership, is we still want this to be a continued opportunity for people to weigh in and look at volunteer stewardship days, and maybe how we expand the trails, to look at it together. We want this to be a place that's protected for its beauty, but accessible by the community. And so, like I said, we're honored, and I am here this evening to answer any questions. It's really, again, an exciting opportunity, and we're just deeply humbled to even entertain this conversation.
So tonight, we just want to get this in front of the council and get it in front of the residents of the town, you know, the best way to do that. And, you know, I think the first step of Save the Dunes would have to do with a environmental assessment.
Environmental assessment.
You know, so whenever we can give them the nod to move forward with that, we could get the ball rolling, if this is something that the town is interested in.
I'm interested in it. Yeah, I see no reason not to. And this is one way to make sure that this land is never developed and stays natural. We're talking about lots 1, 2, and 3, and then we're also talking about where the Moon Valley Trail is, is that right, adjacent to Carwick Road?
Well, no, that's already there and existing. I was just have this to show where we are in relation.
So that's not, we're really talking about just a contiguous property.
Right.
Which ones exactly of the numbers?
1, 2, and 3.
1, 2, and 3.
I see. So the blue, the blue...
That's the existing Stockwell Woods.
Okay.
Owned by Save the Dunes.
Right.
And the red line on there shows the, or purple line is the Long Beach boundary. Because lots 1 and 3 really lie in Michigan City.
Ah, I gotcha, I gotcha. So how is this related to the green paper with the green...
It's not really. I just wanted to show, this is what we already own on Carwick Road, and just where it is in relation to the rest of Long Beach.
I see. On the, on the, this one, where it's written, "Moon Valley Land Trust."
Yes. Someone owns that 56 acres. We don't know who it is.
But is our trail on that?
No. This shows a trail on here where people walk, but no, our trail is only in this 25 acres right here, right now.
And, and the trail is in 1, 2, or 3?
Well, right now, there's only trails in Stockwell Woods because they walk. But if they own all this property, they can, or it's in their name, they can get grants to maintain the trails in there.
I see.
And we'd have to make the trails through 1, 2, and 3, although people walk through there all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just, I would just say that there are deer trails and other rudimentary trails in 1, 2, and 3 that we could, if we were to attend to them, we could deal with them. And we could connect them to Stockwell, and maybe we'd have access for anybody exploring that here. that here.
If, when you do the environmental assessment, just being located next to Site-Tech, I mean, if you come across anything that's of concern or above background or whatever the standards are, does that disqualify Save the Dunes from taking, taking that property on, or what happens there?
Yeah, we'd have to be a deeper conversation. It depends on the lots we're looking at and how contained it is. Our board has already made a vote that just if this is something that we would look into, that's the first step, is that environmental assessment. And so we don't really know until we get there. I mean, absolute worst-case scenario, it would be something, maybe we're looking at parcels one and two rather than three, but fingers crossed, we're not looking at anything that would be harmful to public. That's one of our major things, is before we accept this and encouraging people to go out there, we certainly don't want to take on any risks.
Yeah, and the Site-Tech contamination is really pretty much, as far as we know, just groundwater, which is being monitored on a quarterly basis, and has been stable for at least the last two and a half years.
And so that's on our radar, just so everyone knows, and that having been a concern. So really, we say environmental assessment, we're looking beyond there. We're looking at the things of anything that may not be contained.
I see. I just got to ask you, Joy, you mentioned legal advice, and you're saying, you suggested that Mr. Willoughby should, Attorney Willoughby should recuse himself. So who are we going to use for legal advice on this?
Well, I don't know. I don't even know if Chris has to recuse himself, but I do know that he represents the Moon Valley Land Trust and Woodruff.
Yeah, I think that's, from my perspective, my responsibility would be to recuse myself if there's a conflict.
Oh, I wonder.
I don't feel that there is anything adverse, but that's also the council's pleasure, so that if at any time, I think that if we were headed at any time, or if I foresee a conflict, then you should have me recuse or seek alternate counsel at the outset. I don't see any, I mean, ultimately, I guess the Moon Valley Trust could develop that property. Woodruff may have existed in that area also, so those are two definite clients of mine in my private practice, so that the council have the decision to make that if you prefer, then you should obtain alternate counsel to advise you through the process. I don't foresee that there's a conflict other than, as some of your guests tonight have indicated, if my clients of the Moon Valley Trust, say Woodruff exists, but if the Moon Valley Trust decides to develop, presumably, somebody might not be happy with that. I don't think that's a conflict with what we're dealing with. But again, that's a decision that I'm okay on the way, but I am confident in the ethical side that I don't have a conflict to be able to advise you as to what the legal requirements for the town. Again, I do think it's your problem.
When towns make parkland, or they make a, well, just parkland, there is no way for government to keep the ownership, but to guarantee that, because we've kept, you know, those, those lots at stop 28, and when somebody wanted to build on those, it was recommended to the BZA, I think it was, that no, nothing could be built on there, and it wasn't. So I just wonder, how are we protecting any of them?
Well, right now, I'm really not sure to ask here where you're headed in, or the town's ability to transfer title. There are procedures to follow, to see those things.
Okay.
Joy and I have had these discussions in the past, and she said against, talk to others as well, so exactly transferring title to this property to Save the Dunes, maybe that's a discussion for your date, whether is there an ability to protect these? Sure, but I, I survey your pleasure of going to pursuing whatever avenues or whatever options there are, whether it's partnership, whether that option is viable, if it's actually transferred title. Whether the town is able to protect, I think this is a sensitive area.
Yeah. I want to ask you, was the statement that you say that towns can't keep land in perpetuity of being undeveloped, is that a true statement, or you go by?
Well, I just think there's subsequent administrations that could come.
Oh, sure. But, no, the statement was that you, like, the statement I heard Joy say was that no municipality can hold land to be undeveloped in perpetuity. Is that a true statement legally?
Any next council can come in and do whatever they want.
Oh, I know. But isn't there...
Perpetuity.
Yeah, Joy, but I wondered if there was a legal way for municipalities...
I asked about what, trust, some kind of land trust, and I was told that municipalities are not allowed to do that.
The reason I say that is, is it, it was held up when somebody wanted to put some kind of utility on a parcel of land that was donated, donated to Long Beach with the stipulation that it never be developed. And we accepted it on those terms, and that has stayed that way.
That was the covenant, though, from the entity that transferred it. So there are covenants that are, I don't know, as I see it, and I haven't looked at it.
So we couldn't make a covenant on that property?
I think because they own it, because the town owns it, this current administration can control what happens in the future. I think that it would be, speaking from your concern, and I would mean at my concern of, to address your concern, the future administrations, I think, could reverse that up, much like any ordinances that you pass or any other restrictions. When you sell it and there's a covenant, yes, I guess in the private real estate context, if you had covenants and restrictions that you reserve the property, that those transferred to subsequent owners here, you're not selling it, you're, the town already owns it. So again, future administrations could affect what is in it. I have to say, from what we're dealing with tonight, I haven't looked any more in depth, but I think that based on discussions Joy and I have had, and she's put in a lot of time and I have on this issue of trying to figure out ways to protect this sensitive area. So I think to give you 100% guarantee, if we sit here, there is a risk that, even though you set it aside today, this future administrations could undo that.
Do you have a question? Am I allowed to ask?
Yes.
Let me make sure I understand. We own lots one, two, and three?
Yes.
Okay.
Please give us your name, please.
Oh, I apologize. Dr. Watson, please order, or, or Mr. Willoughby. Lots one, two, and three are owned by Long Beach.
Yes.
But do I understand, this is my question, lots one and three are in Michigan City?
Correct.
Okay, so this is the question, and that's appropriate. What I'd like to know is, do we need to consider Michigan City a sanctuary, since the land, plot is in their community? Is there some reason we would have to contact that?
Not that I know of. I mean, the property is ours, but I guess we can be guided through that.
Yeah, it's an unusual situation, Long Beach, and it's not in Long Beach.
Right. Right, could there be something that...
I mean, we've got homes in Long Beach that are like that. My neighbor has bedrooms in Michigan City and his bedrooms in Long Beach.
That makes sense. Do you all think we need to contact Michigan City in any way, please?
Ultimately, being as respectful as I can, I want to make sure that's a question the board, the council wants to be answered. But I answer their questions and not the...
Go ahead, answer the question.
Yeah, if that's what you, you only answer it's a city of Michigan City with regard to your uses, if you want to do something outside of, it's his own forest, etc. So as the owner, you can provide, you can transfer, just like any other owner.
Thank you.
All right, so I'd like to go on record as suggesting that Save the Dunes go ahead and do their, conserve their, the environmental study, and then you can get back to us, and then we decide where we go from here. Does that sound reasonable?
I mean, is that the next step? I mean, I assume Save the Dunes will be responsible for, obviously, there'll be some legal work on our end of who actually prepares, you know, any agreements, or what does that next step look like?
From my perspective, before you, I'm not clear on what the ask is. What is your intention to transfer the ownership? I'm not sure.
To transfer ownership to Save the Dunes, so they can use that as matching funds, so they can get grants to maintain the trails.
And that it will never be developed.
And that it will never be developed.
Now, you also mentioned that if they did want to develop it, it would come back to Long Beach.
If they ever wanted to get rid of the land or got out of holding the land business for, and if Save the Dunes ever dissolves, the land will come back to Long Beach.
I gotcha. Because, you know, about 12 years ago, the developer, one of the owners wanted your permission to put land, a road through our land, and there were people interested in letting them do that, and we fought against it, and it never was. So we know that, you know, it's just around the corner.
Well, because there is an easement from Carwick, and I know, this is where it gets to the perception of, there is an easement that goes from Carwick to Moon Valley for interest and interest. I think the thing that you have to consider, it doesn't seem like you're making a decision tonight, is the processes on which you have to follow, and whether you actually can transfer title to Save the Dunes.
That's what I wonder. Can towns give up land? It's, it's very hard. I think we should be very diligent in that we're actually giving up land that we now own to, to another entity. And as much as I admire Save the Dunes, there's no question of their integrity and their purpose and their mission, but I mean, we still have to...
Yeah, it's the process of procedures of whether it cannot be, Save the Dunes are questioning there.
And so this evening, whatever assurance we can have that this is, is moving in that direction, because of course, before we do an environmental assessment, which will cost this money, we want to make sure that, you know, this, this is the direction. I understand that it's going to take a while, and we certainly, we want to help with whatever needs to be done. So I don't know how much assurance we can gain this evening, but that's what I know we're looking for.
Well, because I mind the expense of environmental assessments, they're expensive, especially to an entity or an organization like yours that relies heavily on those being generous in grants, etc., to run. I mean, do you have, and have you, I haven't been involved, so I don't mean to, to figure what we're doing, but in terms of the town having the authority to transfer it specifically to you, open it up to you, have you investigated that avenue, or you've just been involved in this type of a partnership?
Mostly, we're waiting on you as far as we know exactly what they want.
So I, I think that you need to have some discussion, and some due diligence and the accountability to transfer title, and in general, transferring excess property or selling public properties off, whatever that may be, there are procedures that have to be followed. And, you know, I certainly will invest and take whatever steps or time you would line, but I don't think it's as easy as deciding that you want to hand it over to that organization. I think there are some steps that we need to take and consider. So again, it's, it's not giving you an opinion that you cannot, but I do think it's important for them, before they hit the ground running and do an expensive environmental assessment, that, you know, if they choose to make that decision because they know you want to walk down that avenue, I want to give pause to you, that at least you know that's not the final decision tonight, that there are procedures that you have to follow, and the answer maybe that you cannot do that without going through or making it available to others that are in the area, which, that may counter what you, what your ultimate goal was. So, and I don't mean that by any stretch, anybody who might be joining our buddy somehow that had to be opened up to others, I don't think that's what the true intention here is, is to work together and preserve that, and put it into some kind of public trust.
So can we, so at least for next steps this evening, can we not authorize Chris to do the due diligence to determine what we are allowed to do as a town?
Give you procedures of trial. That's what I would think would be appropriate for you, because then you can make an educated decision, and then that way Save the Dunes, even though it may not be till next month that you come back to them, I know time is of the essence of these things too, but so that we're not, we're not wasting their money only if I have to do it anyway in the first place. So again, it's, it's up to you, you're the decision makers.
How big and expensive are we looking at for the town to investigate, any idea? Put across to see, is this even possible?
Determine the rules, determine the rules of land transfer.
But that's not much time at all. I mean, we're not here investing a few hours worth of being able to give you the procedures that are available. The real possibility would be, from their perspective, the environmental assessment. So it's what I'm doing, being the only person to speak to the town.
And even though this land is vacant, I mean, are we, is a town paying an expense today for property tax on unused land?
No.
No?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, so I make a motion to have Chris proceed with letting, informing the town by the next meeting, what it is able to do with, with this sort of potential proposal for land, potential transfer.
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so next month, we'll let you know if it's possible, and then from there. So we'll make sure this comes back on the agenda.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay. All right, update, Nippsco poll at the intersection of Rosamund and Story.
We, at the last, at the last meeting, we talked about this. I called the three people who were approximate to this particular poll, and I got one response and two people who apparently didn't think it was worthy of calling me back. And one response was a guy who was dumbfounded that we actually called him, and he would talk, talk to his wife, and he would call me back, but he could not see any reason why she would. She would, and I said, I don't know where your bedrooms are and everything else, about the lights and all that, and so I had not heard back from him. So my sense is that, you know, we could do this. I realize that, you know, when we make a request, even from the council to Nippsco, you know, they, then they have to tell us, yes, we'll do that, and, you know, I'm not sure when that would happen. I can't believe it's not going to happen yesterday. They've got to put a poll and the connections and everything else. I don't even know if, I mean, do you know, if they, if there's any charge, or, I mean, normally, I think that, you know, they're going to get continuing revenue from the light, but I don't really know whether there's anything there. I suppose if you ask.
Yeah, I think the, the next step was, once you got feedback, I mean, I think the council said, let's give feedback to the residents, right, and then the council approves of the streetlight, then that gives you the authority to request it.
Why don't I prepare a letter for Bob's signature to, you know, to send to Nippsco?
Assuming that the council, yeah, assuming that the council...
Well, I mean, it might be something that you do by December. You know, I haven't even talked to the resident. I don't, you know, we support our residents, like the light.
The council would have...
Was it one resident that asked for it?
One resident asked for it, and I just, I, you know, I Googled the people around there, and called everybody, and I got this one response from a guy who said, oh, it's very nice of you to call, but, but he said he didn't think that was going to be a problem. And, you know, beyond that, it's, it's a town, he said, it is a very dark corner.
Yeah, the expense that it adds is, is the usage charge, so Nippsco will put the poll in with the light, but it, it's got to be the council's decision on whether it goes in or not. I mean, I, it's not something I technically have to recuse myself, I don't quite feel comfortable with proposing or approving it, or denying it one way or another. I mean, there's one resident that wants it, and there's probably a couple that live right in that immediate area that appreciate the lack of light, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned that we called him and we didn't hear back. I guess I'm thinking, maybe a registered letter?
I'll, I'll process, so I mean, and I'll call the resident and just tell them that, you know, we... So I mean, and I'll call the resident and just tell them that, you know, we haven't heard back from anybody. And maybe what I'll do is ask you, do you know Mrs. Jones and Mr. Brown, you know, as your neighbors? And if they, you know, if they, because maybe it was just a call, I mean, figured it was someone trying to sell or something, so.
Well, maybe a registered letter if we don't hear back.
Rosamond is like a horse shoe, right?
Yeah.
So where is it located, where they want the?
It's, if you come in stop 18, the way I looked at it, was you come in 18 and set up doing the loop, you make a right turn, it's right there.
Okay.
And so he claimed to be, he actually stopped through, that he moved there full time, so now it's more critical to, you know, to that light when it goes on. You know, I can understand that. But I'll be pursuing that because, you know, he understands the wheels of progress.
And maybe a registered letter if we don't.
Yeah, I'll try to make sure that I get a positive response.
New business, stop 24 construction.
So stop 24, I'll try to hit the summary points here. Suffice to say, you know, the project that we submitted to the grant committee, which was approved, included, you know, all but like construction bid worthy detailed plans. I mean, fairly detailed, I mean, I can pull them up on here, but essentially, that was submitted and approved. And when it came time to, we had to wait until we got approval on the grant before we could move forward with the construction sort of package of detailed design for the plan. And we couldn't do that until pretty much the spring timeframe. So we had Army Corps of Engineer, we had other pools, other steps we needed to take throughout the summer. And my goal was to try to get it ready by this fall to do work before winter set in. And so we put it together and the project that Global Engineering had, I mean, we hired them, they're experts, they do public bidding all over the place. And so we rely on them and their trust and their expertise. And when they put a project together, they estimated, and so what they estimated was somewhere in the range of 200 to 220,000 for the whole project. Again, 100 of which would come from the grant opportunity and the remainder would come from the town. And so that was our understanding. I mean, they detailed it out, they estimated based on other projects in the vicinity, cost of material, cost of labor, and they're usually pretty generous, or I'd say conservative, with when they estimate projects, knowing that, you know, just to be safe. And so we were quite surprised when, I'll pull it up here, we were quite surprised when it did go out to bid and the results came back from three, Gary Up, Construction, Reef Riley and Woodruff, all local contractors that bid. And the lowest one was 693,000, highest one was 857,000. So as others, I mean, you can imagine, I was extremely shocked that Global was that far off of an estimate. And we had very lengthy discussions on how that could even be. Let's see, let me pull it up here while we're, good time.
Okay. Can't pull it up right at the moment. I will, I'll work on it.
The biggest expense of it was there's a rock retaining wall that goes around and it's sort of tiered seating. And even then, I mean, they bid out exactly how much it would cost for each block and the amount of them that they had. So in any event, suffice to say, very disappointed in their inability to accurately estimate. And so what that means is now we have to go back and scale the project down to get something within our budget, because we're not going to spend that much money on that type of a project. So we do have a meeting with them this Friday to go over, and it'll be myself, Dr. Lemay, John Wall, who has some experience in construction related projects, and then Bob Kupler, who lives directly across the street from the project, and he's been part of our committee as well. To meet with Global to better understand the discrepancy between what they estimated versus what we got back. And then they're going to show a proposal based on what they've sort of scaled it down, they would show us what would be within the budget. They claim that there's not a tremendous amount of give up that we have, and they've already contacted the grant committee to say, here's what we're thinking of reducing it to, does that put our grant at jeopardy? And the answer is no. So that's the plan at this point. So I would expect to come back in the December meeting with what that revised scope looks like for the project. And that's something we're willing to do again and rebid. I'll have a schedule for that. And again, the goal is at that point to start construction in the spring. It was pretty ambitious to try to get this going here in the fall, you know, and so at this point, spring is our next point. So I'm extremely disappointed, you know, I feel like I've let a key down a little bit here, because I put a lot on time, my own personal time in this project, and still want to see it through and kind of commit to doing that, so.
Did you say that the coastal branch people are being patient also there? I mean, they're, they could get.
Yeah, yeah, we.
Still could get the hundred and then.
Oh, yeah. So everyone in our pool of submissions that submitted the same time we did, all of them were late in getting approval from the government. And so everyone had asked for, largely everyone had asked for extension, and so we have that extension.
Because I wanted to say, when you're considering this, I would ask you to consider removing the driveway for large, because first of all, there's no beach. And this is such a valuable piece of land, I don't think it should be a delivery for heavy equipment. And so I asked for that. And I asked that maybe some of the paving or cement work might be able to be decreased because if we're going to have another stop be the, the ADA, that maybe we could save money on cement. I hate to put cement on a dune, you know?
Yeah.
So that's just, I would ask you.
Yeah, good, and, yeah, appreciate the thoughts. I mean, certainly, one of the elements of getting approval for the grant was that it would be ADA accessible.
Right.
And you can still do that without such a wide path.
That's true.
You know, and there was pretty limited, the most concrete work, I think, was at sort of the turnaround area that exists today. There'd be some there and then a sidewalk along Lake Shore Drive. But the biggest expense by far were the retaining wall blocks. So they think they can shrink sort of the size of that and what that looks like.
Because it's really, the idea of having those big rocks is appealing, that people could sit, how that was designed, I like that. But, you know, it would be nice to have a winding road for wheelchairs, but maybe we could do it without cement. I don't know. They, those designers know all.
Thank you. Okay. Now, the 2019 CCMG change order by Hassan Associates.
Yes, we've received it. Hassan's been working with the vendor, with Walsh and Kelly, and also with the Indoc. And the rule is that when we do something, if we miss anything, and even if there's, you know, there's like a gap in the paving, and we don't ask for it, that's on us. So we missed some drainage and I'm still happy we got it indicated. We got over $500,000 with, you know, of paving help from the state. But, but it's, you know, what it does is it just reduces our, we still get 70% instead of 75%, but it's kind of, it's our nickel to fix the drains that we missed, and we'll be more diligent in the future. But there's a $42,000, $779, 42779.63 that we have, and it's been signed by Matt Meneo and by Walsh and Kelly. And if it is approved, then it needs to be signed by the Tom Cab, by Alderby, to get this approval. But my recommendation is that we need to move that up.
I'd like to make a motion that we pay that bill because it was real work that was required for drainage issues.
Well, what we're doing with this, the 2021 is, we really have an improved drainage system that we're asking for. It's given us a little less paving, but in talking with Hassan and Tom Dahl, it's really necessary to do that. And I think, you know, the complaints, the more the complaints that I get all the time are the ones, you know, drains and puddles and so, you know, we don't really have a super system, but if we do a better job of making those drains more robust, I think it's going to help. So somebody needs.
I'll second your warning.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done.
Lot of things to sign.
Okay, ordinance, amending Title 15, Chapter 54, Section 154.20, generally known as the Lake Michigan Shoreline Preservation Overlay Zoning District. This amended ordinance was to the town council from the Advisory Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation. Chris, help me out here, do we have a public hearing at all? Just discussion and up and down?
Yeah, I think that you should potentially consider that you need to vote and have unanimous consensus, it's first up this evening, this ordinance, but it did come with unanimous approval from, and available recommendation, but it's in ABC. So you are asking tonight, one reading, if you want to like to do so.
So any discussion? No discussion. But your recommendation.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous, we could actually suspend the rules and have a second vote, correct?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance.
I'm second reading.
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was good. Nick, you wanted to talk about the website?
Yep, just real quick. Hopefully, everyone's appreciated the nice landscape in the background, nicer to look at than the whiteboard. We may have to leave this permanent here. But if you can see it now, of course, I got the internet working. So this is the existing site, for those of you who've been on here. It has some limitations. For example, you know, if you know HTML, that's a benefit. If you don't, it's very difficult and kind of a pain to update. So the purpose of the new site that we've talked about in prior meetings, much more user friendly. So folks in the treasurer's office have a much easier ability to update, upload information moving forward. We'll have training session opportunities moving forward. There's sort of a 24/7 sort of help line, help line if there are issues with, you know, the office needing assistance or tech support. But a couple of things I just highlighted, so this is the test site right now, so you can't access it per se, but the current plan is to have the site go live December 6. And we have a tentative training date. I sent a note, it was kind of late in the date today, but let me know sometime tomorrow or this week. Set up here in the next two weeks, I think, to do a training, a virtual training. If that day doesn't work, we can get another date easily. So some of the enhancements we did here, hopefully just easier to find information. So this feature, you know, how do I, this is intend, these aren't the final ones in here, we're nearing the final. We like to put the kind of common items that most residents are looking for. So, you know, recycling garbage, and I think we're going to reword these to say, how do I, you know, get a permit? How do I find out about, you know, garbage pickup dates? How do I, you know, the common things that people ask for. Sort of easier directory and hours here with contact information. So this is all nearly behind the scenes, live, being updated right now by this web team. So every time I go over here, it's changing here. Kind of the common things that you would look for can be found here in the future. All meetings and agendas would be in just one location versus having to go to different departments to find everything. You know, there's a search feature at the top here. So you go back to the homepage, you know, there'll be constant news items that are always here rotating, and you can go to, you know, to view all of the news in the section. The calendar can be pre-populated, so instead of having to every single month populate the calendar on the right-hand side with the new dates, this can be just populated for the whole year and you only have to make changes from there. So much easier to manage and maintain, you know, Pete talked about earlier, you know, some of the work in the last several years to update. I mean, not perfect, certainly better, but still room for improvement, and I hope the new site can allow for some of that. The subscribe to alerts, so what we're going to do, we have about 700 email addresses on file that we've collected over the last four years from residents providing them. So we're going to auto-upload them to this site. And then people have the ability to update their contact information, subscribe to certain things that they want or don't want. For example, you could even check this box here and say, anytime there's an agenda posted, I want a notification, then it goes up. So you can get that as well as minutes. So again, just some nice features here that we don't have to, available to us today. Again, this is a photo from George Castle that we need to credit him on the site. That was sort of the stipulation that he would give us this photo if we put some credit here somewhere.
What does that, from back there, what does that shoreline look like? You see this part, it looks like?
Oh, I think it's like wood, driftwood right here. This is driftwood.
Yeah, but this, does that look inviting?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, we can crop it, I guess.
Yeah, I just thought, you know, up there, it looks like sandbags and I.
Oh, I see. It's kind of hard, it's kind of hard to translate. Yeah. I think it's a cleaner picture when you're closer to it.
Yeah, serious.
So.
It's definitely a step up from the.
Yes, yes.
The caveman.
Yeah. So, yeah, so December 6, it'll be live. And again, you know, that's the beauty of the site, we can make enhancements and improvements here as we go forward. But appreciate the feedback from Bill and Deanna and others on sort of some initial thoughts on kind of where, what's kind of the most common things that people are looking for in here, so.
I can help, Nick, because he's been doing this with a full-time job for the last several years. And I think, and I, you know, it really is not, it's a job that we'd like to take over, but we just never really got there. So the only thing I would ask is if you're a little patient with us, I think, Deanna and Angelo are going to be a lot of help around this than Bill is. But I think, you know, if you could, if you could stay with us for a little bit, but I do appreciate what you've done over the last several years.
Can you do that? Sure. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Public comments. Hold on. I said I was going to be fair, so we got to be fair. Go for it.
Tina Keltz, 2004, Burbank. I got this in the mail, anonymous, which Pete was talking about, and I do appreciate anonymous mail. And first of all, it had to come from people that read our taxes, because it has, it's 100 Keltz and Justine. My husband's been dead for 20 years, so somebody should be more current. I just objected to the whole thing, because why would some people be sending things from Chicago, except for me, about a citizen of Long Beach, who I think is a credible, outstanding citizen? I'm very annoyed, and what I want to do is have my name taken off the list. Thank you.
I suspect that those are taken off. I suspect that those addresses are taken off the county.
Taxes.
Yeah.
Yes, I know. But I still.
The town doesn't.
So the town doesn't provide.
I still.
I agree.
But I know that my husband's been dead for 20. It's anonymous.
I agree.
I got 10 of them, 10 of them to the south side of the town hall, all the different addresses, so somebody's a lot of money.
Social.
Oh, no.
We all got it. We all got it. And the address, I think it says some, something in Illinois. I mean, that's, I actually had to Google that. If any of our mail, whether it's Long Beach, or if you go to Michigan City and drop it off, it gets processed there, so that's why the Illinois.
Oh, it means they could.
Oh, anyone, oh, anyone can put that, but the, if you look up by the posted, where does it say it comes from?
Carroll Street.
Carroll Street. It gets processed there.
Well, that one I'd. It's the same thing. They were given to. Yes, we got that.
Because they're landlords.
We have land here, so they're getting it to us.
See, they're even sending it to them.
I have no idea.
The address is really.
Any other public comments? Council comments?
Well, yes, I would like to just stress one thing, just for.
The address is really...
Any other public comments? Council comments?
Well, yes, I would like to just stress one thing, just for credit. For the Crossing Grant was the largest grant we ever got and that was a joint team effort from, with the Street Department and Bill. And we went to meetings and for Pete to bring it up is so, I mean, we got it despite Pete because he usually drags this thing so long. So we got that. He had nothing to do with it and I just have to say that. Second thing...
What's that? Do you feel good to say that?
Okay.
All right, all right.
So that's it.
You're done? Okay. You know, now that the election's over, let's try and all be a little more positive, okay? You know, in three years, if everybody wants to sic the dogs on us, that's fine, but for the next three years, I'm not laying off. Nick?
Just one comment. I will not be at the December meeting, so I'm gonna miss this meeting, but I just wanted to use my time to thank Jane, Pete and Joy for their time in the last four years of serving on the council. I know it's not the easiest of roles and appreciate, you know, your stepping up and being a leader and input and I know we don't always agree on everything and, but that's what makes community work and so hopefully, you know, they'll continue to provide input moving forward. But I just wanted to thank each of you for your time and miss seeing you all up here and, but I do also look forward to working with the new council members and hopefully getting started off on the right foot in January.
Right. And I'd like to, I'd like to get me out of that. Bob, you do, don't do this handbringing when Pete's saying that he's responding to something Bill has said and is denying everything that Bill wrote, but you say it when it's directed towards Pete. So this is a government, this is not a fraternity. We're not supposed to all agree all the time. We're supposed to be stewards and sometimes stewards disagree and that's healthy. And it's sickening to say that government has to be sweetie-sweet and all agree and talk behind people's backs instead of in front of our citizens.
Claims approval?
Okay, right, true, but 16752 through 16833, total of $170,402.38 salaries for October 2019 were $57,636, $635,156.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
This is a real long, this is a big deal of checks. So this is, I have some questions. There's one on 11-8 that is L and R body and it's for the police repair, it's $3,187.
And I put insurance reimbursement because, so I can't remember, I can't remember if it was a tree or a deer. It was a deer. Okay, it was a deer that ran into a police car and we received, we had to pay it out, but we actually received a check for $1,000 less than this. So we have a $1,000 deductible. So whatever that number is, you know, we...
It seems to be a lot of repairs, but maybe we should think of lowering that deductible. We should think, because there's been a lot of repairs in the last year.
I don't know, but it's just maybe, but it could raise the insurance cost.
Yeah, yeah.
The recommendation from the insurance agent is that most municipalities have a $1,000 deductible and, you know, maybe it doesn't cost so much for me because I, I think I do have $500 deductible, but I don't have 15 or 17 trucks and buses and everything else. We just have a lot of insurance there, so it's...
Because then there was another police repair, big four in La Corbe for $621. I wonder if we were gonna get that.
I ask that we can turn that in for a check, but I was a repairer over the engine.
Ah.
Insurance repair.
Gotcha.
Pay for engines, unless a deer falls.
Okay, now this is very important to me. I see here that Todd Bullis was paid on 1016, retired officer, is no longer employed with us, and he's being paid $3,276.
The original, the reason I didn't put that, I sent you a copy earlier and the original invoice showed that it had been voided. The reason I didn't put it in this check register because it subtracts that number from the total, so the total is $3,400. But I can, I'll be happy to send all of you copies of the register with the voided check. It's gotta be...
I don't understand why it was made out.
Well, he claimed that he had given help at the parking truck and he and Phil, the police commissioner, had decided that they, that that wasn't our problem and the insurance company would not pay it. And so the, so he's got to pursue it from the Port Town prosecutor.
Okay.
But the town has not, there's no expense for that.
So do I hear a motion to approve the claims?
Move.
Hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hear a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Number four.